7:02, don't tell Tony we're starting two minutes late. I'm sure he's watching. The supervisor is out of town this evening, so we'll have the record just reflect that four other board members are here. We do have minutes from February 24th, 2016 to approve. Do I have a motion?
I want to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes? All right. Then minutes will be approved as written. Thank you, Lisa. I'm sure that the minutes are, the reports are coming in tomorrow is the 10th. I don't have an inventory on, oh, it looks like Jim doesn't have his in yet.
I confess I don't.
So I'm sure by our next meeting he'll be in.
Now where you went to Elmen.
No public hearings this evening, and we have two guests. So for 2106 Five Mile Line Road, if you can come up to the table here, Jim.
This is Tom again, Johnny.
Okay.
He's a guest, first guest this evening.
All right, thanks, Tom.
And just to give you an introduction, Tom is interested in purchasing the church across the street from Mark's Pizzeria, Mark Crane's Church.
Yeah.
He'd like to, he's got a proposal for the church, and he'd like to go through that with you to see what your thoughts are. He and I have talked about the project and some of the things that are near and dear to the town's heart. Talk about that as he gets.
To be clear, the building itself or the church end of it?
No, the entire building.
The entire building.
Yep. 2106.
Is this still with the understanding that the, what we approved that was going to go in there would go in there?
It's not going in there.
It's not going to go in there.
It's not.
So everything's off the table and must be like starting all over?
It's a brand proposal, yep.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, Tom, why don't you jump in?
I propose four loft apartments in the front of the building and five market rate apartments in the back for a total of nine apartments. The front building would be, they would be two-story loft style, and in the back there would be one-bedroom apartments that are about 600 square feet each.
Now, does the church go away, the back area where they actually have?
The church is gone.
Okay.
There's nobody in there at the moment. It's completely vacant.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Are you going to gut it? Are you talking about, I mean, there's a lot?
Um, no, actually, we would be basically breaking up the electric that's there now, adding some interior walls, and basically building out bathrooms, rearranging some of the bathrooms that are there now, but working with the existing interior and the existing exterior as well.
I've talked to him about the issues that the historic preservation board has been dealing with over the years with the building. Number one, he is proposing to reface the building and repaint it and everything. I've expressed the concern the board had for the preservation of the existing stained-glass windows. He's aware of that. It's going to work for us to do that. I think there is one issue with one of the windows out in front.
Just for fair housing laws, there's a crucifix on the front of the building that, you know, that would be the only thing that I see being an issue, but other than that, everything, the rest of the stained-glass windows could stay. They're just back within the nature.
And I think we, you bring up a good point. I think we need to look at that from an historic perspective, because the state does give waivers on certain things based on its historic values, so we'll have to look at that as an issue.
Okay.
He's here tonight just to talk about it with you, just to get you familiar with his proposal. He'd have to come back, obviously, for a conditionally used permit to convert it to apartments.
Yeah.
And I think what we'll be doing is working with him to get a list of all the things that he's proposing for the site. I think he does have adequate parking, and there's 25 or 26 parking spaces on the site, so there's adequate parking for the number of units that he's putting in. One of the things we would look at possibly with you is, as you note, the parking spaces have all been blocked off by a fence. Some of it's been damaged over the plowing over the winter. I know that there's some people along the forage of Penfield Road that might be interested in leasing space from you, if they could use it during the day for their businesses, and certainly at some point in time you and I can compete with them if that's amenable to you.
Okay.
We do, we do look to share parking in the four corners if we can. By saying that, we don't want to mess up your processes, lose parking there, lose living on the site.
Okay.
Tom, do you have any other similar projects in the area that you've worked on?
I've done a five-unit project out in Geneva in South Main Street, which was in a historic district that was actually on the register. So that I did in 2010. Just did a 13-unit renovation on Clay Avenue in the city like three years ago. Done, you know, multiple projects of this size.
Can you get, give us a rundown on the square footage you're thinking about for each of the types of apartments?
Yeah, the one-bedrooms in the back are roughly 600 square feet, give or take, and the ones in the front, they're, they're about 1,100 square feet of floor space, but you've got a big chunk which is 25 feet high from the first floor to the second floor. So, yeah, they'll be pretty impressive, and those will be, you know, above-market-rate luxury lofts.
Is that what you're looking at, luxury?
Yes, in the front, and then in the back will be market rate. They just don't have the ceiling height.
Yeah.
The lofts, how many, are they one bathroom, two bathrooms?
A bath and a half.
Okay.
Full bath up, half bath down.
Okay.
Would you be, would you look to utilize that front porch? Isn't there a front?
Yeah, the front, the front porch. I mean, you know, I hadn't had much use for that. I mean, like, as you, the front entryway, I wanted to put a laundry room off to the front when you first walk in.
Okay.
But as far as outside the space, I hadn't had too many plans for the front porch. Maybe some, you know, long furniture, porch furniture.
So you're not looking to take that, remove that feature?
No.
Well, that wouldn't be good. What about the basement? That, I don't know.
They have one.
Yeah, I know, I remember back when we took a tour in the day, as you try to...
That needs some work.
Yeah, I was going to say, that need. What would you, you would like fix up and put storage area, or would you?
Well, probably a second laundry room down there, but in the back half. And then the front half of the building where it's more archaic, that was, that'd just be stabilized, and then the laundry would be up on the first floor.
So access to these apartments? Is it one access into an area to take?
Yeah, there's, there's two that enter through the front of the building. Then there's the side vestibule which gets you to, through the first floor, one or two apartments, and then you could go to the second floor and enter four apartments that way. One you enter through the back, and then there's one that could be entered through the side as well, on the opposite side of the building. So there's multiple entrances.
As far as some of the infrastructure where the loft apartments are, have you spoken with the fire marshal? Or Jim, have you spoken with Tom about what would need it as far as the exhaust and ventilation?
No, we've got to work on that next, and before they come back to, you know, meet with you, we'll have those kinds of answers looked at. I think he's going to have to lay out how he wants to do it in the building.
Or other internal support structures, beams?
Right.
Yeah, the floor plan is just, everything's fit within what's already there. There's like a walkway on the second floor that's there now that has pillars that run all the way through to the basement. So, yeah, the architect used the space that was there to fit. So it's really just, you know, dividing walls that split up the space and then boxing in the bathrooms and closets, so.
Yeah, there's some really unique features inside that I think you could incorporate, I'm sure.
Yeah, the tint ceilings.
Oh, yeah.
Especially, yeah.
Energy-efficient glass.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
This is just our first look, and it hasn't gone to historic?
Not yet. I'm going to submit that to them for the next meeting. I'll probably invite Tommy to talk to them about it.
That's a smart idea.
As I say, as you noted, we've got some things to do in terms of getting some answers for you in terms of how much we're going to look when it's all set.
And if Mark's got any input, Mark Crane, that would be helpful to them. He certainly...
He knows the building well.
Yeah, very well.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time. We now talk to the start process.
All right. 7:49, Panorama Trail.
We have Mr. Peter Vares.
Yes, Peter.
And we have Mr. Pepsi Kettavong, who are going to be some background as to what they're proposing.
Those are just...
I want to just put it up so that you can...
Do you like anything?
Yeah, I'll go.
Oh, this can be filmed, too.
Such a weird shape.
Mr. Kettavong came to us a while back. He's been with us for several months now, has met with Tony. This is the latest and greatest, I think, appears prepared. This is the property that you know is the former hotel site that was going to be developed next to Popeyes. They are in the process of purchasing it, or will purchase it.
It's purchased.
It's been purchased. As they're intended to develop a mixed-use development on that site, which is in compliance with the zoning, what would be in compliance with the zoning, it's currently zoned industrial. They would need a rezoning to general business if they move forward. With that, I'll let you talk a little bit about the project.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, so the property consists actually of three tax parcels. There are two here, which total about 5.6 acres. Those are the two parcels that form what was approved back in 2001 for the two hotels that were approved there, total of 240 rooms. They had done even the site work and everything, and then the site went dormant. The other parcel is this parcel here that runs along Route 441, that's the Del Monte parcel. They have that property under contract. That's about 16 acres. So the total property area we're looking at is around 21.7 acres. The proposed development, though, really is looking at just this area here. We're not looking at going up, this Del Monte piece goes all the way up to the trailer parks. We're not going up there. It's E-pods with woodlot and slope E-pods. We're not going back in there. So what we're proposing is a mixed-use development in this area, a mix of first-floor office space, first, or excuse me, first-floor retail space, first and second-floor office space, and second and third-floor residential. Right now, the mix is about 70...
Actually, Peter, can I quit?
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, the first floor will be primarily retail, and the second floor, we designate about 25,000 square foot of offices, and the third floor will be a market-rated-by-choice apartments on above, so.
Yeah, so the total residential is about 60 units is what we're thinking at this time. But obviously, with any formal application that would come in with the rezoning, that's those items, those numbers would get buttoned up. The layout in Pepsi, we'll talk a little bit more about that, is prepared to be conducive to pedestrian circulation through it. We had met with Monroe County DOT as it relates to the access out onto Panorama Trail South. It would maintain, it would also include the access that goes out to Panorama Creek Drive here that has the signal, but Monroe County DOT will also allow the access out onto Panorama Trail South that'll line up.
Do they want two accesses?
They do, yes. Somecat does because of the, you know, with the retail and the office, it's the identity that they need.
Would they be looking at a right turn out only, like we have down closer to the Burger King?
What was approved with the hotels, and currently the county DOT is re-reviewing that, is what they approved was a right-out only, but they approved a right-in and a left-turn in. So the only movement that was restricted is an exiting left-turn movement. But county DOT did approve that with the hotels back in 2001. We've done an initial traffic analysis that's been provided to the county, shows that the trip generation for what was projected for the hotels is pretty close to what is being proposed with this mix now, so we just have to wait to hear back from the county, because they will, obviously, as we all know, they tend to dictate what the access will be.
There is sort of an access there right now.
Correct.
I mean, you wouldn't know it if, you know, you told them not to see it when you drive by, but...
Right. Yeah, I think it, you know, was obviously the construction access when they started the site development on the hotel where...
Have there been, oh, maybe, this is for you, Mark, have there been changes to Panorama Trail since 2001?
And that's what I was going to share with, or ask Peter, was I believe this section was owned by the state.
In 2001, Panorama Trail South through here was under the jurisdiction of the state to Penfield Road. I'm not sure exactly when, but that jurisdiction changed to the point that now this segment of Panorama Trail South is under the jurisdiction of the county now. State DOT still has, obviously, jurisdiction over Panorama Trail South as it relates to the 441 ramps and everything.
And the state was the one that, was the agency that restricted the access point?
Correct.
So the county may have a different interpretation of that, or?
Right now, the county is willing to live by that if the traffic is still commensurate. What we did, one of the things the traffic study did show was actually the traffic on Panorama Trail South is less today than it was in 2001, believe it or not.
And I know we were contacted by the traffic consultant to ask us what was new, what was coming. We talked about the hotel that's going up now, the Hampton Inn, just up the hill, get background information on that, Ellison Heights.
So there's going to be a lot more activity on Panorama Trail. It might be going down, but that across the street, and then this. And refresh me, I keep hearing about they're going to shrink Panorama Trail up there to the three lanes or something, make it from four lanes?
The state is looking at it as a potential project on the other half.
On the other side?
On the, on the, excuse me, the south side going towards East Rochester, they're looking at, they call it a road diet. Goes from a four-lane expressway both ways down to a two-lane road either direction with a center turn lane on it.
So it's more north?
Which would be very nice.
441.
Actually, that one.
It's my house, you know, relate to this.
Yeah, it's the lower portion, it's basically the other side of the expressway.
Yeah, it's basically from Paychex, Big Oak, up to the north side.
Paychex, the new hotel, Timothy Patrick, so that end of the road, it would not affect or at least not say anything on the north side.
My only concern, just sitting here right now, is knowing that there's sort of a tricky bend in the road as you kind of open up there to the bridge, and there's that left turn lane that sort of opens up, and, you know, looks like on this diagram, but what's going to happen is you're going to have cars taking a left turn, heading northbound, left turn into the office park, and there's going to be a weird, I mean, it's just hard to kind of visualize, so I just want to be sure that when the traffic studies or whenever final determination is made on who has jurisdiction of the road or whatever, that that is into consideration, because there's going to be sort of this weird conflict.
The geometry has to...
Yeah.
And I can tell you that both the county and the state will review the traffic study, because the county, and we agree, wants the state to look at it, because anything that does here with the queuing, getting onto the ramps at 441.
Right.
That's what the state's going to want to be concerned about, even though it's queuing on a county highway. So both entities will be looking at that. We understand we have to address that as part of any seeker process. But I would like to take a few moments to let Pepsi talk just about, you know, with this being an introductory of just his vision is, and why they've come up with this. And Somecat, just so you know, is a partnership between Pepsi and Dutch Summers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I think, obviously, Dutch has had some very good success working in the town and throughout the area, so wanted to make you aware of that.
This idea came about as when, I don't know, have many of you gone to Quebec City? One of the interesting things about Quebec City is the combination of, you know, old and new, more old villagey kind of feel, and a walking path and things. So I thought it would be an interesting concept to see if we can introduce something new in the area that, you know, it's not your typical development where the shopping center. So we want to create a kind of community, a destination kind of, kind of point, walking path, and, you know, human scale, and that's why we came up with that concept. You know, Somecat Village is more or less like a villagey kind of feel. And in order to make the numbers work, we felt like it has to somehow, I think if we just put the retail, I think it would be tough things to do. Primary, look at, you know, Tops Plaza right now, it seems there's some vacancy in terms of the commercial aspect of it, so we felt to offset that, bring in some of the office spaces and market-rated-by-choice living space up there. So that's the overall concept that we had in mind.
What type of square footage for the retail parcels are you thinking? Like, what, I know you have a crystal ball, but like, what type of retail you think?
We're thinking about kind of like UPS delivery. We don't think about like, you know, big box store. We're thinking about maybe, I don't know, they've envisioned maybe coffee shops and Starbucks.
Services that you would intend that would be services for the residents there? So like you said, kind of a community?
That's exactly.
Destination where I could go to the coffee shop, but types of retail that would be amenable to someone living there?
That's right.
Like boutique uses?
Boutique usage, exactly. You know, like barber shops, you know, I would love to get maybe a, what do you, Scott Miller, you know, some of the people that I'm interested in looking into, so. Restaurants, obviously.
So kind of like a Cornhill Landing type, but in a different, different style?
I would, I would reference as like, you know, Park Point, RIT, with the U of R developments going on and the Cornhill combined. That's how I would look at it.
So kind of mixed use, now we don't have, we haven't voted, we haven't followed through with the mixed-use tools and stuff like that, so they're not on the books yet?
No, but the general business owner of Lofts, the mixed-use developer, actually, so does the, so does the LB zoning.
So what I'm saying is that...
But not as defined yet as...
No.
We're not going to be, this application, is it actually going to be defined as a mixed use, or is it going to be a general business that kind of incorporates?
Well, yeah, I think it's going to incorporate the things we're looking for within mixed use.
But we're not waiting for...
But it's a general business zoning district, basically, on that.
All right. I just want to be clear on that. And this conforms with the comp plan generally?
Well, yeah, I mean, this area was always, actually, this area at one time was zoned general business. Linda will probably remember, several years back, the property was rezoned to limited industrial, primarily because somebody wanted to put a car dealership on their site. The town board didn't want to see another car dealership along the Panorama, so went back to them, and Thermal Fisher's been utilizing here and there over the last several years for storage of trucks and trailers.
Trucks, trucks.
That'll be the question, where all those trailers go as this is developed, so.
Speaking of that car dealership, we did have inquiry from a couple of times that they were interested in acquiring that property for that particular usage, so we turned them down.
Yeah, and just, just to understand that if the board does grant a rezon, and this is the reasonable here, because your function is to grant rezoning or not grant it, but if it is granted, it would be a conditional rezoning subject to that being built and not another car dealership or somebody else coming in that you're not, you have no jurisdiction over it, it's for rules.
Right, that's what we would envision, is that with the conditional rezoning, it would set the parameters.
And we still go to planning board?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Two processes, yeah?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. That's exciting, you're thinking outside the box here. I'd like to, I'd like to hear different...
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
It is intriguing.
Peter, could you send us those, particularly the layout, the site plan?
You have to.
Electrอน?
That's PD, yeah, except the PD.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's one of your factors.
Right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Under law and finance, fence installation with drainage easement at 135 Galant Circle.
You probably don't remember Ryan, because he was here, his wife was, as staff.
Yes, two weeks ago.
That's right.
My wife was here, I was working, and there was some kind of unresolved questions that I hope that we had resolved for, to go ahead and move forward this evening.
Yeah, we went back out, you know, originally the thought was to run the fence all the way over, and I think there was some confusion about whether they wanted to run the fence all the way over the creek, drain through the back property line. Met Mr. Castor out there following the last meeting, he said, "No, I just want to run it to the back of where he has a little garden area out there." I went out there with Jim's map and a wheel, wheeled it off, and it appears he wants to be about two feet into that drainage easement. So after looking at that, it was a minimal impact, you know, we passed it around, we kind of just dashed in where the, where your fence line is.
Right with the fence.
But I know staff had concerns originally about going over the creek line.
Right.
One, if things are flowing up and down, the creek could get caught on the fence, and two, you know, we need access to these, you know, fairly regular bases to get in there with machinery, pull stuff out, clean the ditches, keep them, keep them maintained, so.
And as I mentioned, when your wife's a minimal disruption to you, you know, that to make sure that there's, you know, that minimal chance of having to disrupt that area.
Yeah, and they understand the whole harmless agreement, even at two feet, you know, if staff needed to get in there, or town needed to get in to utilize it, you know, they'd be responsible to put the fence back up, but it's much more reasonable to work around, you know, a two-foot intrusion than crossing over the creek and then having to take it down and get access through, and then the neighbor would do the same thing, and on and on, it becomes kind of prohibitive to keep them positive.
If there was any questions about the style of the fence, it was a 54-inch black aluminum full-grade safety fence, so, you know, a chance for the kids to get over the creek with two gate accesses, one in the back and one on, one inside.
It's fairly easy to remove if you have to do it. Easy to put back if you have to.
Sounds good.
So what I'd like, with your permission, what I'd like to do is prepare a resolution for the 23rd, authorizing Tony to sign the whole harmless agreement, and get that recorded at the Cully Clerk's office. It'll be on file whenever required.
Are you all squared away then?
Yes.
You can let your wife know you set the record straight.
No, no.
To disturb the wars at home.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take care of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, Mark, update on the mixed-use development hearing date.
Yes, we were before this board back in December, passed along the mixed-use document that came from the mixed-use committee for the board's consideration. At that time, wanted to give the board some time to, some soak time to look at the document, you know, take that in, also give staff time to go out and get additional signatures on the petition. What I just passed out to the board kind of shows, color-coded, we have all the signatures in gray, we have maybes from the people, we're still waiting for signatures to come in. The oranges red are people that currently don't want to sign it. So assessed valuation, we're well over the 75% needed in the assessed valuation. Acreage, you know, we're well over where we are. This is kind of the handout, and we went door-to-door, wanted to make sure we talked with every person in the neighborhood and make sure they knew about this if they weren't informed before. So we, you know, went door-to-door, had the entire planning staff out last week, knocking on doors, talking with the residents. If they weren't home, we left them a little flyer, a little handout for more information to contact us. Isaac put together a nice little trifle that I thought was nice, and then, you know, working with the Phyllis and the communication team that have been putting together these door hangers, which are nice, saying, "Sorry, we missed you, we stopped by," so we've had quite a response from that, so.
So our next move is just to hold an official public hearing?
That's kind of what I'm seeing, if the board is prepared to schedule a hearing, hold a hearing on the application. Obviously, we'll contact the committee, inform them, inform the residents. We have quite an email following group. We have residents here tonight that are interested in following as well, and we'd let them know, you know, when that ends, so I don't know what the board's thoughts and...
Are the four opposed, are those four individual property owners, I think, is that the same family?
All the same family.
Same family, okay, yep.
I think it's time to go forward.
I would, I would say that.
Let's set a date and keep the ball rolling.
Okay.
Are we looking in April, or do you want to?
I would talk to Tony.
Work with Tony and set it, I don't know if you want to set a separate night just for that?
I'll, I'll leave it to him, his discretion.
As soon as you could do it now, because of advertising deadlines, would be the 20th of April. I currently am going to be bringing resolutions for you for the Pet Hotel on the 20th, informational meeting, and also the outdoor music issue at the Cha Cha's Restaurant will be the two[1728.82] meeting, and also the outdoor music issue at the Chacha's Restaurant will be the two things we'll be playing on any evening.
I'm always for more the merrier, but like I said, just leave it to Tony.
Okay. We've got Tony.
No, if he's for, I think that would be good to add to it, I think.
Okay, so that was just being attended tonight, Steve, the board's ready.
Very good.
We're about to talk to the board, so I'd like you to get that set up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Windsor Regge, waiver from town's design criteria.
Yes, I'm going to keep one for myself. This is the development at the corner of Five Mile Atlantic, and we have some maps for the board to look at as well. The first request is for a sidewalk waiver, which is typical for development similar to this. The other ones are things that we're looking at and why, the reason why we're looking at updating our design criteria this year. Many of the items are how we're in conflict with the new state DEC regulations and Phase Two regulations, so we can go kind of item by item, but first is a partial sidewalk. I'm trying to see if you could pass it on.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I kind of have a key map showing the overall layout of it. They're proposing compliance by installing sidewalks on, I'll wait till you guys, I'll get the map, I've kind of highlighted there, pardon my cranny skills, but in the purple color, I kind of highlighted the areas they're proposing to put sidewalks in. So being the corner of Five Mile Atlantic, if you look at the inset on the left, they're showing full compliance with sidewalks on Atlantic Avenue on Five Mile Line, and then they're proposing to put sidewalks on one side internally, on the inside of a loop, so they're just asking for a waiver for the outside loop, and then the small little stub of a cul-de-sac. PRC looked at it, PRC thought it made sense what they were asking for. We definitely, you know, staff was supportive of the Five Mile Atlantic piece, you know, finishing off or continuing to extend the town's network of sidewalks has always been important to this board and important to the town to keep those going. The piece on Five Mile is only one or two parcels away from sidewalk we have that currently ties into Rothus Park on that end, so that would be a nice connection there. So that's item number one, I don't know if you want to go through all of them, or if you'd like to have questions, comments about that one first. And the other ones, get into stormwater regulations. We have a condition in our code...
No, I don't have a question.
Go ahead, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
The second one, our code says you have to be, the foundation of a house has to be 100 feet from a high water line of any pond area. They are showing as the little boxes, we're hearing circles, but the little circles or the boxes which we show as typical setbacks are 100 feet away from the pond. Their statement is basically if people come in and want to put a sunroom on the back of a house or put a side load garage, the box square on the plan is not always obviously what is built. Houses adjust a little bit, so they're asking for a slight waiver from that. We looked at it, there are some landforms in between it, and then the basement elevations are above the high water elevation, as the other area, we had a concern as whether, you know, the basement elevation is above that, so they're asking for a waiver down to 80 feet from high water just to allow flexibility, so each house that comes in doesn't, you know, if the building department gets it and they show a bump out or a sunroom on the back, they'd have to come back before this board individually for waivers, so we could, you know, do that in the future, or if the board so deemed to grant a waiver tonight globally to the neighborhood for those individual lots that we carry forward.
And PRC says...
PRC was okay with it in select situations where the basement is higher than high water elevation on the pond.
So a case-by-case?
There is a case-by-case basis on that. Number three, the length of the swale between inlets, again, our code says three lots are 400 feet. They're running into an issue because these are smaller lots under Town Route 278, three lots, it may end up being four or five lots in a 400-foot width, so they're just below that. PRC's comment was as long as the swales are 2% and you keep a positive grade on the swales between the properties, we're okay with them, no more than 400 feet apart, but we're okay if it is three or if it's four or five lots for that. And then the last one is disconnection of roof downspouts. This is something, you know, we've talked to the board about before, and something that our design criteria is in conflict with DEC regulations. DEC is looking for recharge back into the ground. With the green infrastructure, our code says all downspouts need to be connected into a lateral to the street. We've allowed it on, I believe, three locations already, Caroline Court, Sparrow Point, and I think Ashland Rise, we allowed them to go to Splash Block, and at least of the homes that are in, I've not heard any issues, concerns from the neighbors that it's created a situation or created a problem. Again, staff's comment was as long as you have sufficient swales between the houses, a defined swale to drain that out, at least 2% or more, you know, staff was okay with, or PRC's comment was they were okay with that.
It looks like we're going to have to revise our specs anyways to accommodate the green infrastructure requirement.
And that's, that's one of the goals of the engineering department this year, is to go back and look at our design criteria, see where we're in conflict, come back to this board and, you know, update that document as well, see conflicting with where they're at.
I would say that for tonight, just having been presented this and taking a look at this, I would propose tabling this for the evening.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm going to fill the board's attention, it's still pending before the planning board, so it's not a done...
Yeah, I would, I concur with Rob in tabling it for this evening, this is the first time I've seen it, and I want to kind of think about the implications to the four different elements here, maybe have some follow-up questions to you, Mark, over the next week or so, and we can just do that by phone or whatever.
Yep.
I support your...
Yeah, I'd be glad to come back at, if you want to bring it back to the 23rd and, you know, bring it back again if that's sufficient time or anyone wants to discuss.
Is the 23rd a ledge session now?
It's both.
It's going to be both, okay.
Session, but yeah.
Okay.
This is new information to you.
Yep.
My apologies to not get it out to the board.
That's fine, no rush.
But I say it's still a pending application, so it's not...
Okay.
Not going to be...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Under informational items, lawn financed, proposed pet hotel.
Yeah, that's just information to you, we just talked about it a few minutes ago, but I talked to Tony, I know that you would like to move this along and get the public informed as to what these people are proposing. So again, as soon as we could do that would be the night of the 20th of April. Tony and I have talked about using that evening to do it, and he thought that was appropriate.
It's fine.
So we'll notify everybody, standard radius isn't that, go a little bit further if we have to, just to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda, so I would say that this meeting is adjourned at 7:38.